Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the August 17th, meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. I will note for the record that Commissioner Jones and I are here in person, and Commissioner Thomas is joining us via Zoom. She's virtual with us. We'll start with the reading of the public statement. "We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC." And with that, we'll go to department updates. Is Ms. Kelly with us? Oh, there she is, in person. Hooray!
Hello. Good morning. We are still seeing a high rate of transmission of COVID. I would like to take a moment to remind the public that COVID-19 boosters can help to restore protection that has decreased over time. If you are eligible to receive a booster, please do so. It is so important to help keep our community healthy and thriving. The COVID-19 pandemic has taught us many valuable tools for dealing with public health emergencies. Many of the tools that apply with COVID also apply with monkeypox. This includes good hygiene practices, monitoring for symptoms if close contact occurs, isolation at the onset of fever or symptoms, and contacting your healthcare provider for testing needs and vaccination eligibility. Monkeypox vaccines are available to those at risk and in need. All adults at risk, regardless of gender, are eligible for vaccination. The CDC defines high risk as those who are known contacts to someone with monkeypox, those who are immunocompromised, or those living with HIV. Positive Link on Miller Drive here in Bloomington is hosting vaccination clinics for high-risk populations on Tuesdays from 4:30 to 7:00 p.m. I was very excited to be able to share that news. Please call 812-353-3219 for more information or to schedule an appointment.
Excellent. Thank you. Commissioner Thomas, do you have any questions? Or, I think, Mr. Jones? I don't either, but that's great news about having vaccinations available for monkeypox.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other department updates? If not, we'll move on then to public comment. This is for items not currently on the agenda. I will remind everyone that there is a limit of three minutes per speaker, and at 2 minutes and 30 seconds, you will hear a tone that will indicate that you have 30 seconds to complete your statement. So is there anyone in person who wishes to make a public statement? Is there anyone online? If so, please raise your hand. Not seen anyone. Let's go on then to the next item, which is approval of the minutes from August the 10th.
Move approval of the minutes for August 10th, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the minutes. Is there any discussion or corrections?
I sent a correction on the continuance of motion to continue on the rezone request item.
Right. Okay. Thank you. At this point, then, Mr. Cockrell, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you. Next item?
Move approval of the claims docket accounts payable August 17th, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Mr. Miller with us to explain what's been going on.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. The total for claims was $1,750,534.07. There were four larger claim items that I'll touch on this morning, starting with $394,636.95 for E and B paving. That was for blacktop surface at Geddes Creek Road and Delap Road. $346,218.88 was for food and beverage tax distribution for August. $238,437.68 was for Anthem for August claims and fees primarily. And finally, for the larger items, $174,324 was for John Jones Chrysler Dodge Jeep to purchase three 2021 Dodge Durangos for our Sheriff's Department.
Yes, I'll note for the record that these Dodge Durangos are not the kind of things that the general public can buy. Are there any questions or any comments on the claims?
No, I don't think so. No.
Do I need to take public comment on that? Mr. Cockrell?
I do not believe you take public comment on claims.
Okay. If there's no public comment, then we have a motion for the approval of the claims docket for August 17th, 2022. Would you call the roll?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you.
I will thank you, Mr. Miller. I will indicate for the record that we have reports from the Treasurer for July 2022 and for weights and measures from July 16 through August the 15th. Now we'll go on to new business.
Move approval of the Public Health Crisis Response and Workforce Development/Reopen Schools Agreement. Fund name: School Grant-COAG. Fund number: 8111. In the amount of $440,000.
Second.
And I believe we have Ms. Kelly here to talk with us about that?
Good morning. So Joe is our school liaison. He's been doing a really excellent job managing this grant. Just last week, Joe had hosted a back-to-school meeting with all of the area schools to go over state guidelines and recommendations and any questions and concerns. Many positive outcomes have come from this grant funding so far. This includes additional cleaning supplies. One school was able to obtain a nurse that they were not previously able to have. And one school was able to provide safer drinking water with a bottle filling stations for students. We expect that these positives will continue with the additional grant cycles.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas, do you have any questions? Or, Mr. Jones?
Not really. I just think this is definitely a worthwhile program.
And I think, as you've noted, that we've learned some things through COVID about better hygiene and better practices, and I think this is an extension also of some of that. So I thank you for working on this. Is there any public comment on this? If not, Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Next item, please.
Move approval of the Rico Copier Lease Agreement. Fund name: Cumulative Capital. Fund number: 1138. In the amount of $69,413.28.
Second.
Thank you. And we have Mr. Krone here to talk about this?
Good morning, everyone. Greg Krone, Technical Services Director. We have 36 copiers that were on a 60-month lease, and we're 48 months into, or just shy of 48 months into that 60-month lease. The first 36 months were on a promotional term at a different rate. That term has expired, and now we've gone to a month-to-month charge, which isn't our customary way of contracting for copiers. With that month-to-month comes a higher service charge rate maintenance fees, things of that nature. So we spoke with Rico, and we were able to get an agreement together. With this new agreement, this will carry us through the remaining 12 months of that original contract, but under reduced-rate terms. It also gives us the option then, at the end of that 12 months, for a dollar buyout, which was not part of that promotional term. So as it is, at the end of that 60 months, Rico would be coming to take their equipment. If we do the dollar buyout, then we own the equipment, and we can move forward with it as we see fit, which is our customary way that we normally do the contracts. So with this refi, it actually saves us. Our current rate is $7,230 a month. That will actually cut that down to $5,784. So over the next 12 months, we'll be saving just over $17,000. So this request is to approve the new lease agreement with Rico for those 36 copiers.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas, any questions?
No. Thank you for working on this. This is a much better deal. I appreciate the work that went into getting this new contract aligned.
Sure.
Mr. Jones?
I also appreciate your work on this. I did want to ask if all of these are also duplex machines?
Yes.
I would like to encourage county employees to please start using the duplex feature as much as possible. It will not only save a lot of trees, but it'll save the county quite a bit of money.
That is correct.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. So, Mr. Cockrell, is there any public comment on this? And would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you, Mr. Krone. Next item?
Move approval of First Appraisal Group appraisal of the Convention Center. Fund name and fund number to be determined in the amount of $15,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Cockrell, would you discuss this?
Yes, this is an appraisal agreement. We discussed it briefly at last week's work session. While it is for the Convention Center, it is also for all the areas that we bought around the Convention Center in anticipation of a Convention Center expansion. So it would include essentially everything the county owns between Walnut and Morton Street from the east and west, and from the north, Third Street and South Second Street. So I think there, I think we sent them about 16 or 15 different parcel numbers, which are things we own. Now, not all those will get a, we've asked for a value on a parcel-by-parcel basis as well as the total. Not all those will get parcels because they're, some of them are the alleys that have been extinguished and things like that, and they're just not big enough to really put a value on, but they would be incorporated within one of the neighboring parcels. So this is the agreement for that work.
Very good. Commissioner Thomas?
No, thank you for putting this together.
Yes, thank you. I think it's important that as we enter into negotiations with the city about this that we know exactly what our position is and have all the information we need.
Yes. I really appreciate moving quickly on this. Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you. Next item?
Move approval of Hallmark Rentals and Management, Inc. Property Management Agreement. Amount: 7% of the rental income.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Again, Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, this is a carbon copy, almost, continuation of our current agreement with Hallmark Rentals. They've been working with our Convention Center management company for the lease of those parcels that we are no longer, that we are not currently using for our Convention Center use. The one notable exception to what we had included in the first round of this agreement was the Napa Building, which, as everyone's aware, that we have kind of taken that out of that, and we are utilizing that, or utilizing that at least for this year for our election purposes. So that's, that payment we made for that use would not have gone through Hallmark Rentals. It would have been outside that. I think the other thing I wanted to point out, but I am trouble locating it, is the, that this is for a number of years. However, I think we have the right to pull out of the agreement with a certain amount of notice. I think it's 30 days. I just can't pull it up right now. So kind of this going hand-in-hand with the previous one kind of gives some context for that purpose.
I believe that it's, so 60 days?
Yeah.
On page 66 of the packet. So Commissioner Thomas, do you have any questions?
Nope. Thank you for putting this together.
No, I don't. Thank you.
I don't have any questions. Is there any public comment on this? Seeing done. Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Next item?
Move approval of Resolution 2022-22 Issuance of GEO Bonds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Again, Mr. Cockrell?
Yeah, this is the first step in our attainment of general obligation bonds. This is for an amount that is $3,100,000, which is the same amount as we had had the previous two years. This is for various projects for our buildings. And I think the Exhibit A and also on the cover sheet of the, or the Agenda Request highlights what the projects are included in that. At this point, those projects' cost estimates are over $5 million. So I think that there are some projects on this list that probably are not going to be achievable.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Thomas, do you have any thing that you'd like to say about this?
Well, I know, I know one of the things that we had spoken about is jail lock upgrades, jail door repairs. This is something where it will be as needed basis since we are looking to develop a new facility. Obviously, that won't happen overnight, and, but, but these are expensive items. So I appreciate that they're listed on here. I just, we want to ensure that the public understands we're not, you know, putting a lot of money into a building unless we really have to, namely, the Criminal Justice Building, the Zito building.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
No.
I really appreciate the fact that we're putting in things for Greenway, which really impacts quality of life. So I'm pleased to see that within the bond. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you. Next item?
Move approval of Ratification of Hope Alight LLC Consulting Agreement. Fund name: JDAI Programming. Fund number: 9123. In the amount of $7,375.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Ms. McAfee here to talk to us about this.
Hello. Good morning, everyone. This item might look a little familiar as it was presented last week during a work session. And my apologies to everyone for the rush that we put upon all of you that were part of this discussion. There was a deadline, and with summers and vacations, quite frankly, it just slipped us. So we're here today to actually present it. It has been vetted by Molly, and I know she's at least attending. So if she has any feedback or any other words that she needs to share, I would obviously ask that she be given that opportunity. Otherwise, Hope Alight has been working with probation and our community on trust-based relational intervention. TBRI is a trauma-focused response to dealing with young people, families, clients, staff, just our community with histories of trauma. And it really focuses a lot on regulation, regulation of emotional ability to be connected and to process the important work that we're doing. So this contract will support the ongoing consultation that we are doing with Amy Abel, who is the owner of Hope Alight, and continue to ensure that staff uses the skills that we spent so much time during training, that we utilize those skills in our interactions. Something that has come up quite a bit in probation and evidence-based practices, JDAI, is we spend a lot of money in training, but the real work doesn't start until you work toward implementation. So this is asking for the continued support of implementation.
Very good. Commissioner Thomas?
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, this has been a really successful program. And what JDI has accomplished, I believe it's been around for maybe six years or so, maybe a little longer. And they've really accomplished some pretty wonderful things. And I especially appreciate the fact that rather than just focusing on particular children, you actually focus on the entire environment that they live in. And I think that must be very helpful.
And the focus on the family, which is part of that. But it also, this, this, it works, it knits so well with the work that we're doing on criminal justice reform because this really is part of our zero intercept model for what we're doing. It's just with juveniles instead of with adults. So I think that this is a really good addition to our community, and I'm very, very happy that we have this going. Are there any, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing done. Mr. Cockrell, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Wonderful. Thank you all so much, and enjoy your day.
You too. Next item, please.
Move approval of Ordinance 2022-20 Kings Road Farm Rezone.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Mr. Myers from the Planning Department with us today. Good morning.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen here in one moment. All right. I will give a brief synopsis of the petition here in a moment, but I will let you know first that last meeting, you stated that you did not want to hear any more public comment regarding this petition. I did receive a letter in the, in my email box yesterday from an individual that could not attend the meeting due to a scheduling conflict. And they wanted to know if they want, you wanted to see that letter. So I brought some physical copies, and it's also in my presentation, if you'd like to see that letter. But you can also, since you stated before they didn't want any more public comment, I leave it to you.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'll go ahead and do this brief summary. This is the Kings Road Farm Rezone from RE 2.5 to AgRR. It's in, at 5577 East Kings Road, and it is in Benton Township, Section 31. It's 19.12 acres. The request is to rezone the property from RE 2.5 to AgRR with the intent to establish a tourist home slash cabin use on the property. That use is not permitted in the RE 2.5 zone, but it is permitted in the AgRR zone. In order to establish a tourist home and cabin, a petitioner in a zoning district that does allow for this type of use does have to go through the site plan process and make sure that they meet all the conditions of that particular use in the district. So if approved, the petitioner will have to go through those procedures to receive approval for this commercial site plan for a tourist home slash cabin from county planning. And they'll have to meet Condition Number 48, which is in Chapter 802. And additionally, the petition site would be allowed to pursue any available permitted uses under the AgRR zone as long as those conditions, if there are any, can be met, and no restrictions are placed onto the rezones approval here today. If denied, the petitioner may continue to operate the property as a single-family residence or may pursue any of the available uses as outlined in Chapter 833 for the RE 2.5 zone, as long as, as again, those special conditions, if there are any, can be met for each of those uses. Okay. So that's just the general gist of everything. We've seen this several times. So I will take any additional questions you have at this time.
Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Jones, do you have a desire to see this additional letter?
Yes.
Let me scroll through to that letter so I can put it on screen in one moment. Okay. Here's that letter, and I will come up to the desk if you would like, and you read a few, some physical copies as well.
Thank you. Oh, okay. We're hearing a bird for anybody that doesn't know it's, yes.
That may be behind me.
Commissioner Thomas, do you have anything that you would like to say at this point?
Yeah. So, you know, I have really struggled with this one in a way that I haven't with most petitions. And for me, you know, I could see a real benefit to the rezone in that we would have the historic preservation overlay on parts of this property that would help preserve it for posterity for the entire county, for the benefit of the entire county. The Voorhees family is a great, great family, you know, amazing character references. But at the same time, we have neighbors who live there. And we have neighbors who live there who are concerned about what a short-term rental will do to their neighborhood. And, and believe me, I've heard stories from outside our area, but also within the city of Bloomington and in the county about tourist homes and what happens. And this is a, this is a neighborhood. This is not a secluded area. And so it's, it's been, I've gone back and forth more times than I can count on this one. And I really, I do again, want to thank everybody for coming in and sending us emails and letting us know their thoughts. It's, it's been helpful in the process in the sense that it really made the decision very, very difficult for me. But I'm really split in the middle. I can see pros and cons on both sides. And when I'm split in the middle, I, I just can't support a rezone. Thanks.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah. I'd like to clarify something. I can't always completely hear what people say when they have a mask on. Did you say that one of the conditions will be that they'll strike all the uses from the AgRR that are not included in the RE 2.5 except for the ones that are relevant to an Airbnb and a single-family dwelling?
We don't have that as a commitment at this time. That is something that could be coordinated, however. That is something that could be coordinated, however.
I guess I would like to make a motion that that commitment be included. Do I need to say that more clearly? A commitment to strike all uses from the AgRR zone that are not included in the RE 2.5, except for the ones that are relevant for Airbnbs and single-family residences.
I will, I will second that, but we definitely need the petitioner to give a verbal commitment. And then I believe we would have to have a written commitment, depending on the vote, in order to proceed.
Would, would, would you come up to the microphone, please, and state your name so that we have it on the record?
Jason Voorhees, I'm the petitioner. And, and you may recall, I don't know if you received my email earlier after the meeting last week, but that was definitely a condition that I asked for to, to think, see if that could help alleviate some of the concerns that we just limit the, accept the uses of the AgRR to the overlapping uses with RE 2.5 in addition, but also including the allowable uses of vacation rental cabin. And that, that would, I would support that wholeheartedly. That would accomplish my goals. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question about this for counsel or for planning. If that written commitment comes through, does that follow the property then in perpetuity until there is some other kind of rezone or redefinition of that zone?
I, I think essentially as long as that written commitment is accepted and recorded, it's got to be reported in the recorder's office, it would be a lien or a type of restriction to property use. Yes.
Thank you.
I, I would just like to know if the property were to be resold, what sort of process would it take to change those uses?
If the property were to be sold to a different party under all these conditions and the rezone? So if they wanted to use any of those other uses that are available in the AgRR zone after the recording of this commitment, I'm not sure how the course would proceed with that. I don't know if you can un-record a commitment that is bound to the land. I'm not sure. I would defer.
It would have to go through some kind of process. I, I don't know if it's exactly the rezone process again, but it would have to go through some kind of process, and the county would have to make an affirmative allowance out of that commitment.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Thomas, your hand is up?
Yeah, I, I think this is unfortunate that we're getting these offers and this, having this discussion so late in the process. I just, you know, I, I wonder, you know, what, what would the neighbors think if this had been offered earlier and this was on the table? I just think it's unfortunate that this is sort of an 11th hour offer. I mean, it's a, it's an interesting idea and it's a great idea. I seconded it, but, you know, I, I'm just concerned that the people who live in that neighborhood haven't had the opportunity to chime in now. And I don't think that's fair to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on the amendment? I can't see on TSD if there are any attendees that want to speak. Thank you. Seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, would you call the roll on the amendment, please?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
No.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to one. Motion to amend is approved.
Thank you. I'm going to say that this has been really something that I've gone back and forth on and is definitely, since I've been a commissioner, the hardest rezone that we've had to review. I have chatted with Ms. Sunderman and read her emails. And I must say that I don't think that whether or not there's an Airbnb there will determine whether or not a fire pit is used. Long-term rentals or any other property owner would also be doing the same thing. But I also am very, very concerned with what we heard from the neighbors about traffic in and out, about the inability to control large parties. And so I am not really in favor of this rezone at this point because of, of listening to the nearby property owners. So is there any other discussion from anyone else?
Yeah, I just want to say, well, repeat that, yes, this has been one of the most difficult rezones that I've encountered going back a number of years to when I was first on the planning commission. The neighbors and the community seem to be rather evenly split on whether they want to see this happen or not. Mr. Voorhees and his wife have made a number of commitments, and I'm not, some of them are actually legal commitments. They have said that they will not rent to anyone without first looking at the recommendation or the, how they've been rated by Airbnb, which I believe they will do. I, I believe they do really care about this property and want to see it well taken care of. At the same time, generally, I'm very inclined to be swayed by how neighbors feel. In this case, that's a little hard to really grab onto because there seems to be such a split in how the neighbors are feeling about this. I believe that I will be supportive of this. I, I think the fire issue I completely understand, but the county does have ordinances about outdoor fires. And I believe as long as, you know, if there are problems, the sheriff should be called and they'll look into it. When it comes to parties, well, should the Voorhees live there again? I believe they have three daughters who will eventually become teenagers, and those daughters might decide to party. Their parents might even leave them there alone at times, and they could really party. At least I seem to remember that kind of thing from when I was a youth. And also I think that three teenage girls could cause an awful lot of extra traffic all on their own. So I'm not really sure that those are valid concerns. I do really like the fact that it will, that one of the conditions will be that it become an historic property. This is a property that really should be preserved. And of course, any historic property is more valuable if more of the original farm is included with it. So I certainly hope that no attempt will be made in the future to subdivide. Given all of that, I, I guess that I am ambivalently in support.
Commissioner Thomas, do you have anything else?
No. Thank you.
If I may add something before a vote, there are motions made. I just want to clarify the amendment for the additional condition. So we were offering the additional commitment that all other uses other than tourist home slash cabin were removed from the AgRR district. Do we want to retain the uses of like single-family residents and those types of uses that if it were to revert back to just a regular single-family use, if that would be allowed?
Yes, that was part of what was.
I thought that was part of my motion.
Okay. Thank you.
That list you included in the packet, Mr. Myers, with the, the RE 2.5 list of uses, conditional and permitted, and the ones that are starred, those would be included.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we're ready to call for the question. We've said that we won't take any other. Yeah, we've, we've said that we won't take any other comment on the actual petition.
So you ready for the roll call?
I think so, yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
No.
Commissioner Giffens.
No.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is denied. Two votes against, two one, four.
Thank you. We have no appointments for today. I will remind everyone that Hoosier Hills Food Bank is sponsoring Fresh Fruit Fridays. So if you're in need of food, you can pick up a free box or boxes of non-perishable food at 2333 West Industrial Park Drive in Bloomington. If you need more information, you can call 812-334-8374. And their next drive-through is a week from Friday on August the 26th. And I believe they also now have a scheduled one for September. We'll, we'll make announcements on that when it gets closer. Free COVID testing is still available at the Monroe County Health Department, 119 West 7th Street, and at the Monroe County Public Health Clinic located at 333 East Miller Drive. We are still accepting applications for our boards and commissions. You can go to www.co.monroe.us.us for more information. We have upcoming blood drives that are being done in conjunction or at IV Tech. The next one is Wednesday, October 24th, a week from today, from 1:00 to 7:00. And Thursday, October, I'm sorry, not October, August. Thursday, August the 25th, from 1:00 to 7:00. And then in September, on Tuesday, the 6th, right after Labor Day, from 1:00 to 6:00. And Friday, September the 9th, from 10:00 until 3:00. These things are also listed in our minutes at the Board of Commissioners page on our website. You can sign up for our Monroe County Alert Notification System for all weather and health-related emergencies and updates. Again, you can do that at www.co.monroe.us. And I want to let folks know that we will not be meeting next week. The next Board of Commissioners meeting is in two weeks on August the 31st. Commissioner Thomas, do you have anything else to add?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
We have several things on our work, well, a couple of things anyway, on our, our work agenda. So how about if we reconvene at 11:00 to go over those things? Does that work? Thank you, everyone. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.